...to adopt our agenda, and I would just need a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve the agenda as stated.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Wills Hill, second by Mrs. English. All of those in favor?
Aye.
We have ourselves a meeting. First up, item number four, matters reserved for board action. We have our own Ms. Shelley Becker, our CFO for our proposed budget for the year. Good evening.
So we are prepared tonight to call the nation that this is the budget end result on its year to finance fiscal year 2022, 2023 financial plan and budget. So tonight we're going to review all of our other funds or faculty budget information. There it is again, linked to the information, feel free as long as you can ask questions if you will allow, because we have reviewed or some of the controls information. So we know if any questions. So and tonight is taking action on the budgets, we have three resolutions that we are seeking adoption at the end of this presentation. So we will be adopting the 2223 budget appropriation resolution. The next resolution we have is called resolution authorizing use of beginning fund balance. And our third one talks to our 2021, 2022 supplemental budget and appropriation resolution. Okay, so we are just going to do an update on our general fund. So as we had talked in May, we have salary increases for all employees. We do, we had a question last time about staffing, our FTE number, so I have a slide, we'll go right and talk about that. Our general fund does contain a staffing increase of not quite 14 FTE. Again, as we've talked before, our budget is being built on a declining funded pupil count of 194. That's something where definitely we will be, I think we'll all be a little excited for the start of school to see if we're, if our enrollment increases. We know this year too, and we actually have gone through that now, the closure of two elementary schools. We have Aspire Online, our medical insurance, and Para increase for next year. So here and I apologize, the difference column is a little bit in the black. But the question last time had just come up, and this is our general fund, full-time equivalent. So you can see where we were in this fiscal year and for fiscal year 22, 23. And again, this is general fund, the breakdown of what's called job class 100 through 600, that is required by CDE. So that is categorization that we must comply with, with the state. But here this shows administrators, that's pretty self-defined, our professional instructional, that would be our teachers, our certified staff. You can see, and rightfully so, that's the largest category of our general fund FTE. Professional out there, that's made up of some of our managerial, professional, technical classes of employees, such as like an accountant, IT, health specialist, paraprofessionals, those out in our schools, what we know as our parapros, office admin, that would be our secretaries that are providing office support. And our last, trades and services, that's our bus drivers, our custodians, et cetera. Okay, again, our general fund budget to the far right, tonight we are seeking approval in our resolution from the Board of Education for a resolution approving expenditures of 108.7 million. And that is there in the right-hand corner, third item from the bottom. As always, part of our OE and our financial stewardship, we talk about looking in the future years. And again, our general fund five-year forecast, these are just assumptions and variables at this point in time. I think we all heard about the interest rate increasing by a point seven percent again. And we are modeling here an inflationary increase of just 2%. So I'm pretty sure just as the economy are going into the fall, especially our next legislative session, as school districts in Colorado are funded on inflation, that is something that's going to be closely paid attention. So next year, will our inflationary that will get additional funding be 2%? Now that's highly unlikely, but again, more to come in that area. Some significant gains in that being decreed. We still have a negative factor. Pupil enrollment, why our budget includes the adoption of 194 students, funded students down. We are starting to see little trickles and signs that we, fingers crossed, may have increased enrollment. That's something we're going to continue to monitor over the summer and back to as our students start next school year. So again, this is our proverbial, our multi-color future year forecast, I'm going to go right to, my eye gravitates towards. Thirteen of a fund balance requirement, 13% of expenditure. And line, and I apologize if my voice sounds like it's out, it kind of sounds like it is up here. And I'm not moving. I'll hold it. Can you hear me now? Hello? Okay, great. So with that, as we look to projected budget year 24, 25, and we're going to talk a little bit towards the end of the presentation there. So we know again, what this forecast is showing, in the green line, a 6% ending fund balance. We know that's not going to happen, we're not going to, you know, violate our own OEs and procedures. But just more to talk about, we're going to talk a little more about funding the future and potential opportunities. Okay, I am going to go pretty quickly through our other funds. So if there's any questions, none of this information has changed from last time. What we have provided here, just an updated estimated actual column that reflects our March 2022 financial statements. So again, with insurance reserve, the board will be approving budgeted expenditures of 2.1 million for our insurance reserve fund. Our nutrition services fund, again, this is a fund where really, again, with all of them, but just with cost of doing business increasing rapidly, again, we'll be paying close attention as always, total expenditures, 4.8 million for nutrition services. Our grant fund, 32.6 million. Our bond redemption fund, again, that's just making our debt interest and principal payment, 14.4 million. And our cap reserve, doing all of our maintenance items, again, seeking approval, 1.4 million in total expenditures. Our building fund, lots going on here for sure, it's exciting. I, things really kick up over the summer. Here we are seeking expenditure resolution approval of 42.3 million. And our land acquisition fund, expenditure 45,000. Our health insurance fund, expenditure budget seeking approval, 487,000. And last but not least, our pupil activity fund with all our fundraising. And clubs and activities. Okay, in totality, so tonight, all funds combined, we are seeking approval, resolution adopting 207.8 million. That's always good, just as we think about the size of our organization, if we were a Fortune 500 company. So we are just under 208 million organization. Okay, next steps. It's hard to believe, but we've already started our audit for this year, it's not even over. We've already had our auditors on site last week or the week before. Again, our second bullet point talks to state of Colorado, allow school districts to do a revised budget in January. I anticipate we will be doing that. Discussion, future funding opportunities. This is something we'll be starting to explore, to look at over this next year, probably have some conversations. Esser, it's really hard to say, I have to say, we're doing an update meeting today on Esser, and we are going to close out Esser 1 in July. And that, just to even hear that, we're like, wow, we have gone through our first totally closed, done, expended. Esser 3 ends September of 2024. So just shy of two years. Now, we've been able to do some amazing work with that before and after, I mean, I could go on, and we all know that. So talking about what does the financial future look like for our district as Esser times out and unfortunately, yeah, it was one-time money. Also, within our strategic plan, this is, we are going to step our fiscal advisory committee. I'm really excited about this one, one can get excited about a fiscal advisory committee. And the goal of this is to have representation not only from the community, we may have a board member rep and then staff to help educate, advise, receive recommendations from our community. So this is something we've had. I did, no, there was a curtain there. That was cute. Wow. I'm not sure I knew how to do that animation, but I appreciate that. We are Harrison. So wow, what a year it's been thinking about starting our, back in January, February. This is really the culmination of all that work. So thankful to the Board of Education, Dr. Perhansel, my colleagues here in the room, and really all the staff. It takes all of us. I may be the CFO figurehead when we talk about finance, but it takes all of us. And having the conversations about how we're allocating our resources and what our strategic plan is. So again, community, culture, and classroom. And we believe, strongly believe that our financial plan leads us forward with our strategic plan.
All right, there we go. We're back. I'll say thank you again to you, Shelley Becker, your team is awesome. You guys have done an amazing job to my board members. We have three resolutions here, three motions that we need to approve of. And so we can just go ahead and start with the first one.
Mr. President, I move that the board approve the resolution titled Budget and Appropriation Resolution regarding the need for this board to approve the budget of revenues and expenditures for the school district for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022 and ending June 30th, 2023 in the allocations and amounts that are specifically identified in the resolution. I move that the board approve the resolution.
I would need a second for the first.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Wills Hill, second by Ms. Janice Fraser. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Onto the second motion.
Aye. I move that the board approve the resolution titled The Use of a Portion of Beginning Fund Balance as Authorized by Colorado Statutes Regarding the Need for This Board to Authorize the Transfer and Use of Portion of the Fiscal Year 2022, 2023 Beginning Fund Balance for the Purposes Named for Each Respective Fund in the Amounts and Purposes that are Specifically Identified in the Resolution.
I second.
Motion by Mrs. English, second by Mrs. Salazar. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And on to the third.
I move that the board approve the resolution titled Fiscal Year 2022, 23 Supplemental Budget and Appropriation Resolution regarding the need for this board to approve the adoption of a supplemental budget for expenditures not to exceed the amounts listed in the resolution.
I second.
And motion by Ms. Fraser, second by Mrs. Wills Hill. All those in favor?
Aye.
And with all three motions passed, we are funded for next year.
Thank you.
Very nice, very nice. All right, we will move right along to item 4.2, Urban Renewal Authority Agreement. We have Mr. Derrara Walker with us this evening. I believe our language is at the forefront of our agenda.
Mr. President, I move to support the Urban Renewal Authority Agreement for Hancock Commons.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Salazar, second by Ms. Fraser. All of those in favor?
Aye.
And with the majority of them, Hancock Commons is approved. Mr. Walker, if you would like to stay behind with us, we shouldn't be too much longer, you'll be able to take those papers on to the next, the next signature. Well, congratulations to you, sir. All right, to keep us moving, we'll move along to item number five, Board Consent Agenda. These items have already been discussed at past dates, but I will read through them for the public. Item 5.1, Approval of Minutes for Work Session, May 5, 2022, and Board Meeting, May 19, 2022. Item 5.2, OE 13, Facilities Indicator Report by our own Ms. Shelley Becker, Assistant Superintendent of Business Services. Item 5.3, OE 5, Learning Environment Treatment of Students Monitoring Report, our own Dr. Claudio, Assistant Superintendent of Personnel Support Services. Item 5.4, OE 12, Student Discipline Monitoring Report by our own Dr. Mike Claudio, Assistant Superintendent Personnel Support Services. And for item 5.5, I would just need a motion.
I move to approve the board consent agenda items as stated.
I second.
Motion by Mrs. English, second by Mrs. Wills Hill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda items moved. We are a little bit early here, but I didn't see anyone else walk in. She's testing out those heels. All right, and I've been told by Ms. Wills Hill, we do not have anyone here for public comment. So we will move right along to item number seven, Superintendent Consent Agenda. Item 7.1, June 2022 Personnel Report and Comparison Report. Item 7.2, April 2022 Financial Statement. And for item 7.3, I would just need a motion.
I move to approve the superintendent consent agenda items as stated. I move to approve the superintendent consent agenda items as stated.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Fraser, second by Mrs. English. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Superint- Superintendent Consent Agenda Items, uh, so moved. Item number eight, Monitoring Board Performance. First up, uh, item eight point one, our annual work plan. Uh, we have not had any changes. Um, item eight point two, uh, our legislative updates.
Can we just remind people of Juneteenth festivities going on?
If you didn't know, and I doubt you could not know, uh, Juneteenth celebration starts tomorrow at?
One.
The America the Beautiful Park.
One P M.
At one P M. There we go. One P M tomorrow, and will last until we're done celebrating. So, we have no end. But, uh, we hope to see you all out there. Uh, we ourselves will be present, uh, for ceremony, uh, tomorrow evening at five P M at America the Beautiful Park. So if you could join us, that would be lovely. Harrison in full force. Right. Ms. Salazar, you have something for us?
Yes, we now have a date for the grand reopening of Panorama Park.
Very nice.
August, Saturday, August twentieth. Um, so that was added to the, um, work plan late, so you probably didn't see that.
So we do. Do we have that updated? We do.
Is there a time?
So ten A M, August twentieth, Panorama Park Grand Opening. Yes, that has been added. Very nice. And just so it's in the forefront, our Backpack Bash is July thirtieth, right before we get back to business, so. Those are the two events for late summer for us. All right, and we will move to item eight point two Legislative Updates. The session closed. No more changes, other than we're gonna be in full effect for nutrition services, so. Welcome, welcome. It's gonna be fun. All right, and to move on to item number nine, to adjourn, and I would just need a motion to close out the year.
I, I motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been a rough year. We're ready. We're ready to get out of there. Motion by Mrs. Salazar, second by Mrs. English. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. It's been a great year, and we can't wait to see you next fall.